Good afternoon. I am Senator Shelley Echols, and I would like to thank you all for attending the reapportionment and redistricting committee meeting today. I will now call this meeting in order, and I would like to ask our pro tem if he would open this meeting as we do all of our Senate meetings with word of prayer.
Thank you.
Oh, what number are you?
Number nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And everyone, if you would, now with me. Heavenly Father, we've come to the Capitol today to begin a process of doing the work for the people that we represent. Thank you for giving us that privilege. Please be with each of us individually and collectively as we make important decisions for our own constituents and the state as a whole. Please forgive us of our sins and help all those that are less fortunate and those that are in need. In Christ's name, amen.
First of all, I'd like to thank some people for the work they've done to help prepare this map. Our state map drawer, Gina Wright, thank you so much. She spent a tremendous amount of time with me and Vice Chair Hatchet. Her expertise and wealth of knowledge have been invaluable. Thank you to Vice Chair Hatchet. We've made some trips to Atlanta, and we've spent a lot of time together, and I've appreciated your help and assistance, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you to this committee for your dedication. We have a few long days ahead of us, and I want to thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you to the senators who have given their time to meet with me to discuss your districts. I learned so much about your districts in those meetings, and I appreciate your willingness to have open conversations with me about the process. Thank you to the public who have chosen to attend this meeting today. Your participation in the hearing is vital, and I appreciate your attendance and participation. In your folder, members, you will find a few documents. The first thing we need to do, just because we're in a special session, I'd like to re-adopt our committee rules. So I'll enter is the same rules that we adopted last time, just like to re-adopt those for this special session.
All right. I think that's entirely in order, and I would like to make the motion that we adopt the rules as you have proposed in the folder and the same ones that we had from session in 2023 to be the rules governing us during the special session for this committee.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion in a second. Thank you. Okay, so we'll vote on those rules. All in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed, raise your hand. Thank you. The next order of business is to adopt our guidelines, and you find a copy of those in your packet as well. These are the 2023-24 guidelines for the Senate reapportionment and redistricting committee. This just lays out the process that we have followed in drawing these maps, and it's the same set of guidelines that the House reapportionment and redistricting committee will be approving as well. And at this point, if there is a motion, I would entertain that.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All of those in favor of adopting these guidelines, please raise your hand. All of those opposed? Thank you. All right. Leader Butler, I just wanted to confirm that you want to present your bill tomorrow. Is that correct? And your, what number are you?
Yes.
Number 12. You said that is correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so tomorrow, we will hear your presentation of your map that you would like to present to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. A little bit of history about the map drawing process. We began by carefully reviewing Judge Jones's order. The order was very specific about what needs to be done in the Senate, and to quote Page 509 of his order, "The remedy involves two additional majority-black Senate districts in South Metro Atlanta." Judge Jones also noted that the districts drawn by the various plaintiff experts overlapped in some areas. Shortly after Governor Kemp called for a special legislative session, I sent out emails to every senator from the affected areas to meet. Because of the short amount of time that we had to prepare for this session, I allocated several days to be at the Capitol and even more days to meet virtually. I met with one member at 7:30 in the morning at the Capitol. I talked to one member while I was at a UGA football game. My husband wasn't so happy about that. I would like to thank Senators Dugan, Strickland, Saye, Anderson, Harbin, James, Davenport, Jones, and Rhett for taking the time to talk and meet with me. Your discussions were very helpful, especially when I found out that one member had moved and we didn't have their correct address. We consulted with legal counsel and began drawing districts with Gina Wright in her office. Now, Vice Chairman Hatchet, I'll turn it over to you if you would like to make any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to welcome y'all. Thank you guys for coming and being a part of this process. As Madam Chair said earlier, this has been a, has been a process. And when we first sat down to draw the maps, there were several things that we considered. Number one, obviously, is the judge's order. And because we had maps previously drawn, we didn't have to start from square one. We had an order to go by. We made sure to comply with his order, the Voting Rights Act, the traditional redistricting principles. And then we met with Senate members whose districts would be impacted on both sides of the aisle. It was eye-opening to me. Every member that we met with had the same request. Keep my district exactly the way it is. I like the way my district is drawn. And so we have the judge's order on one hand telling us we've got to redraw these, and the members on the other hand saying, keep my district the same. So it was a challenge, but in response to those conversations, in response to the judge's order and our traditional principles, we believe we drew a map that affected as few districts as possible, and look forward to hearing public comment about this map and seeing this map through the process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
After meeting with those members, we first drew with Gina Wright in her office the new majority-black districts that were required by the order in South Metro Atlanta. Those districts are 28 and 17 on the plan in front of you, members. With that configuration, almost all of the black voters covered by the areas in the plaintiff's experts' districts in those areas are included in majority-black state senate districts. The only area not included is Griffin, but that area wasn't included in the majority-black district for one of the plaintiff's experts' plans either. Placing districts in the south part of Metro Atlanta meant that other districts had to move north. You can think of that as a simple ripple effect of moving districts. As a result, majority-white Senate District 42 moved from the northern part of DeKalb to eastern Metro Atlanta, and majority-white Senate District 6 moved from the northern part of Fulton County to western Metro Atlanta. In the proposed Senate plan, the Senate plan involves changes to 15 districts, and all of those are in Metro Atlanta. The second page of your packet includes a plan where the only districts displayed are the districts that are changed. So if a district doesn't appear on that page, it didn't change. Our primary goal in creating this district plan is to comply with Judge Jones's order in every respect. I told every member that I met with that my primary goal is simply to comply with the judge's order. After drawing the districts required by the court order, we then followed our existing traditional redistricting principles to work on the remaining districts. Those principles included: maintaining district populations so that deviations from the ideal district size are less than 1% to comply with the U.S. Constitution requirement of one person, one vote; limiting additional split counties by only adding one additional county split; drawing the new districts utilizing the most recent precincts from county governments. Some counties updated their voter precincts this summer, and these maps recognize those new county voting precincts; ensuring all districts are contiguous; ensuring all districts are reasonably compact in shape; ensuring communities of interest are protected as far as possible. Many of you described these in our meetings. Your input was invaluable with that. We also made sure to avoid the unnecessary pairing of incumbents by ensuring that every incumbent senator of both parties is not paired. As part of our efforts to ensure every incumbent senator had a district to run in and to win in, we also worked to maintain the continuity of representation as much as possible, which involved partisan political considerations to ensure that the Senate plan remained balanced between political parties as it was in 2021. This means we also used extensive partisan data, including election returns from 2018, 2020, and 2022. So I'm going to discuss now the two districts that had the most change. Senate District 17 is one of the new majority-black districts required by the court order. It's located in almost exactly the same location as the plaintiff's experts' districts in this area. And I have a map of one of the exhibits, of both of the exhibits over here behind the committee. The district contains the Panhandle and southern part of Clayton County combined with most of Stockbridge and McDonough. The district includes all of Hampton as well. Judge Jones relied on the inclusion of most of McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton in the same district for this area in his order on Pages 285, 286, and 316. The district boundary of District 17 matched those communities centered on McDonough. This district boundary has only a single incumbent, and that is Senator Davenport. Senate District 28 is the other new majority-black district required by the court order. The plaintiff's experts drew this district in two different places. One expert anchored the district in South Fulton, as we have done here. The other expert utilized populations from District 16 and District 34, which resulted in higher black voting age population percentages in adjoining districts. District 28, as proposed, is anchored in South Fulton County, where one of the plaintiff's districts was, and ensures that black voters in Fulton, Fayette, and Clayton Counties are all in majority-black districts. District 28 also relies on some of the same highways and healthcare systems Judge Jones relied on at Pages 325 and 326 of the order. The district includes part of the city of South Fulton and moves north into Austell, all areas that Judge Jones found to share strong connections at Pages 190 and 191 of his order. The district connects a number of suburbs around Metro Atlanta that are all experiencing growth and are diverse communities. This configuration also limited the number of adjoining districts that had to be touched. The district has a single incumbent, and that is Senator James. So now, before we talk about all the other district changes, moving to those adjustments around the majority-black districts, I'll explain those changes. There are a few things to note about those remaining districts. First, both plaintiffs' experts testified that they did not know a lot of details about Georgia geography. Our process was informed by Ms. Wright's extensive knowledge of Georgia and my meetings with senators about their areas. We believe we've reached a plan that is far better than those produced by the plaintiffs while also complying with everything the judge requires. Second, it's important to note that the ripple effect is real when drawing plans. When new districts are located in the southern part of Metro Atlanta, nearby population has to be adjusted. Those changes then ripple out primarily north until they are resolved. Third, the 15 changed districts here are less than those proposed by the plaintiffs' experts, so we were able to maintain district cores in a better way than their experts did. Mr. Esselton changed 22 of the enacted Senate districts, and Mr. Cooper changed 35 of the enacted Senate districts on their proposed plans, and we changed 15. Fourth, we took into account the work on county election officials who have to update the voter registration database. By drawing the map this way, we are working to minimize the amount of work required before the 2024 elections. Fifth, the plan does not eliminate any existing minority-opportunity districts. Judge Jones was very clear on Page 510 of the order that we cannot eliminate any existing minority-opportunity districts. While he doesn't define that term, it's clear that he's referring to existing majority-black districts. On Page 511, he refers to whether the plan provides black voters with additional opportunity districts. There are also references to opportunity districts that clearly refer to black voters on Pages 106, 145 to 146, 268, 417 to 20, and 427. This Senate plan does not eliminate any existing majority-black districts, and it takes two existing majority-white districts, that's District 17 and 28, and converts them to majority-black districts. Sixth, it's important to remember that we believe our 2021 Senate plan complies with the Voting Rights Act and are pursuing an appeal of the judge's order. That's why you will see language in this order that reverts to the 2021 plan if the appeal is successful. This mirrors language used by Democratic majority in 2002 when the state senate plan was not pre-cleared in time for use in that election. But if anyone is upset with how a district is configured, remember, we did not draw these districts this way in 2021 originally, and we did not want to redraw these districts now. We're doing this because we were sued by democratically affiliated groups. Now, I will walk through the remaining changed districts. I'll start on the east and work my way west. So Senate District 25 stays largely the same with slight adjustments in the Locust Grove area to accommodate the addition of District 17. This ensures that voters in this district will largely maintain existing representation. Senator Williams will remain the senator in this district. Next is Senate District 42. Because of the ripple effects of moving districts north, Senate District 42 was previously a majority-white district in DeKalb County and is now a majority-white district in eastern Metro Atlanta. It has much of the territory of the prior District 17, which has become a majority-black district. It includes areas with strong connections like Newton, Morgan, and Walton Counties, and growing areas of Henry County. The boundaries include many rural areas and areas where people are moving from Henry County into, as they get older. This configuration also ensures more of Newton County stays together. Senator Strickland will be the only incumbent of this district. Next is Senate District 43. In order to make room for District 17, District 43 moves north into Gwinnett County, similar to the configuration of the existing District 55. Otherwise, this district is largely unchanged, with all of Rockdale and portions of Newton and DeKalb and all suburban areas. This district shares connections through I-20 and into growing areas of Gwinnett County. Senator Anderson remains the incumbent for this district. Next is Senate District 55. Senate District 55 also ripples north, taking in Tucker and some areas that were previously in Senate District 41. It remains in both DeKalb and Gwinnett Counties and includes areas along I-285 on the eastern portion of the city. Although Tucker is not whole, it includes almost all of the city, along with areas of Stonecrest. Senator Butler remains the incumbent of this district. Next is Senate District 41. As part of the ripple effects around this area, District 41 shifts to the west, taking in all of Clarkston and moving over north of Decatur. This district previously ran from Stonecrest to Clarkston, so it includes a number of areas that were previously in it. This configuration enables the district to stay majority-black while moving north because of the locating of District 17 to the south. Senator Jackson remains the incumbent in this district. Senate District 10 is directly affected by the creation of District 17 because it previously ran through that part of South Henry County, now included in District 17. As a result, the district shifts north to include areas around Decatur. The district previously included Stockbridge with portions of Stonecrest and will continue to do so, but with less of Stockbridge included. The district remains majority-black even as it shifts north. Senator Jones remains the incumbent in this district. Senate District 44. Like District 10, District 44 has to give up population in the southern portion of the district to create District 17, so it moves north as well. In so doing, it takes in Decatur, ensuring that we included portions of Decatur that were excluded in 2021 because the boundaries had not been updated. The district includes all of Decatur and most of the Avondale Estates, areas that were previously in District 42 while keeping those communities whole. The district remains majority-black even as it shifts north. Senator Parent remains the incumbent in this district. Senate District 39. Moving over to the other side of Metro Atlanta, the next set of districts are the changes necessary to add to other new majority-black districts in South Metro Atlanta. There are some blank spaces here because no changes were needed to Districts 36, 34, and 16. District 39 maintains its current north-south orientation, shifting to the west slightly to accommodate the changes to add District 28 as the new majority-black district. The north-south orientation has been consistent with how this district has existed for several cycles of redistricting. Senator Halpern remains the incumbent in this Senate District 38 shifts east and north to accommodate the addition of District 28 in the south. It exits Cobb County and now will be wholly within Fulton County, connecting areas from Palmetto and Union City, which stay whole, to areas of Buckhead. There's a strong community in Fulton County, and the district maintains its majority-black status even as it shifts north. Senator Tate remains the incumbent in this district. Senate District 35. This district shifts significantly to the north to accommodate the new majority-black District 28 in South Metro Atlanta. Instead of running south, it now runs from South Fulton up to the Smyrna area while maintaining its majority-black status. These areas are connected as growing suburbs located primarily along the 285 corridor on the west side and sharing a number of common interests as growing areas. Senator Estvez is the incumbent of this district. Senate District 33. In order to accommodate the shifts of adding District 28, District 33 shifts north and east, taking in areas toward East Cobb. The district maintains its primary east-west orientation, connecting Powder Springs with Marietta, as it did previously. The district is wholly within Cobb County and keeps Powder Springs whole. Senator Rhett remains the incumbent in this district. Senate District 6. In the process of creating District 28, there was significant population left where District 6 is now located. This district keeps Coweta and Hurd Counties whole, avoiding a split of Coweta County. In order to come up to the population needed, it moves into the southern part of Carroll County, where District 28 previously connected Coweta, Hurd, and parts of Carroll in the map prior to the 2021 districts. District 6 connects the University of West Georgia with Noonan, where there are strong growing communities, and ensures that small areas in rural Carroll County, which share a strong similarity with Hurd County, can remain in a district that is similar. Senator Brass is the incumbent in this district. Senate District 30. District 30 remains largely the same, with the same boundaries in Harrelton and Paulding it previously had. The district previously included a portion of Douglas County and now takes more of the western part of Douglas, in an area that is very similar to Carroll, including Villarica, which is a city that straddles the county line. The district includes most of Carrollton, and Carroll County remains the largest county in the district. This district shifts east to help accommodate the creation of the new majority-black District 28. Senator Dugan remains the incumbent in this district. And that concludes my presentation of the map and the districts. At this point, I'm going to open up the public comment. And so we had a sign up. Who is not on the sign up who would like to be added to the sign up? Well, that changes things a little bit. We, you want to, we'll allow more people to sign up. I want everyone's voice to be heard, but I will because there are so many people who would like to sign up now. I will limit your comments to five minutes. If you would be respectful of that time limit, everyone should be able to get your point across in five minutes, but I do want people's voice to be heard in this. So Lillian will bring the sign up sheet around. Who's the first name, and we'll go ahead and get started? We're going to get started with David Garcia. And hold on one second, and I will get your mic up. After Mr. Garcia, we've got Dr. Jones. If you want to be on dag, we'll get started with you as soon as his comments are concluded. Five minutes. All right, so we're going to set a timer. You'll hear it go off at five minutes, and I'll give you a couple of seconds to wrap it up at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman and committee, for having us here. I'm David Garcia. I work for an advocacy organization named Galeo Impact Fund, and we advocate for the Hispanic community throughout Georgia. I'm here today because the proposed Senate plan fails to adequately remedy the substantive and procedural failings of the last maps. One district is particularly concerning, Senate District 6. In the prior Senate District 6, voters of color, including Latinx voters, banded together with some white voters to elect Senator Jason Estvez, a Latinx candidate. In the proposed map, even though Senate District 6 was not implicated in any way by Judge Jones's decision, the legislature cracked the district, increasing the white voting age population from approximately 56% to approximately 72%, and ensuring that voters of color can no longer elect candidates of choice. The targeting of Senator Jason Estvez is emblematic of the legislature targeting legislators of color, a continuation of what the legislature did to Michelle Al and Lucy Macbeth during the 2020 process. Senator Estvez was a public school teacher and was the first Latinx candidate elected to the school board in Georgia. He was only sworn in as a state senator for Senate District 6 in January 2023, less than a year ago, and the legislature has already drawn him out of his district. Additionally, the legislature did not seek adequate input from the affected communities and provided the draft Senate maps only 48 hours before the opportunity to comment. This is a continuation of practices and lack of transparency that previously led the legislature to enact legally deficient maps. The Senate and House committees are apparently also holding hearings at the same time, further making it more difficult for Georgians to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Ashana Jones. I'm a community advocate in the Griffins Spalding County area, and today I stand before you to address the need for fair redistricting, particularly where I live, in Senate District 16, which was found to be a violation of the Voting Rights Act but remains unchanged. We must confront the stark reality that black citizens, a vital and integral part of our community, have often been marginalized in the political process. Our maps must reflect the true voices of the people. Fair redistricting is not a political Fair redistricting is not a political issue. It's a matter of justice and representation. The lines on the map should not be manipulated to favor one party. Rather, they should be drawn to ensure that every citizen's vote carries equal weight. In the pursuit of fair representation, we must prioritize prioritize our communities over political calculations. That begins with creating districts that mirror the diverse makeup of the population in our state. By doing so, we empower citizens to elect leaders who genuinely understand and advocate for their needs. It is our collective responsibility as citizens to champion transparency in the redistricting process. We are asking you to ensure that the lines of lines drawn on these maps are a reflection of the people's will, not the interests of a select few. We demand accountability and openness in this crucial aspect of our democratic foundation. Fair representation is not a luxury. It is a fundamental right. Senate District Sixteen and others must be drawn with equity in mind, ensuring that Black citizens have a meaningful voice in shaping the future of our communities. Denying any group fair representation undermines the principles we hold dear, principles that advocate for justice and equal opportunity for all. By drawing districts fairly, we bridge historical divides that have silenced Black voices for far too long. It is an opportunity to rectify the imbalances of the past, empowering Black citizens to elect representatives who truly understand and champion their unique needs, concerns, and aspirations. To make any decision otherwise or to create any maps that do not have the goal of the parameters above would surely deem this body to be morally bankrupt in the eyes of the citizens of Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Raul. I'm going to there you are. I don't want to.
Escalade.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
No problem.
And then next we have Niles Frenech. Francis, thank you. Thank you. You'll be up on deck next. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Nichols and members of the committee. My name is Rahul Garabidou. I'm the Senior Voting Rights Staff Attorney at the ACLU of Georgia and one of the lead counsel in the case Alpha Phi Alpha versus Raffensperger, a case challenging state legislative districts passed by this body in twenty-twenty-one, and one of the cases that is subject to the federal court's order issued on October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Before our case was filed in twenty-twenty-one, I, along with my colleagues at the ACLU of Georgia, testified at every town hall across the state and during the twenty-twenty-one legislative session advocating for fair maps. I'm here today to raise concerns with this committee about the chair's maps produced on Monday, November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. We put out a letter last night outlining these concerns that can be found at aclugeorgia.org. But I want to talk to you all today about some of those concerns and urge this committee to take a look at at proposed set remedial maps that we put out last night as well that can also be found at aclugadotorg. I want to talk about the issues that we have by by framing what the order says, and there were two really important aspects of the order issued by the federal court on October twenty-sixth. The first one that you mentioned, Chair Nichols, is the number of additional Black Majority districts that need to be in a redrawn plan. Five new Black Majority State House districts and two additional Black Majority State Senate districts. I think everyone understands that, and this plan technically complies with that piece of the puzzle. But the second important aspect of the order is about where the court found violations to be happening in the state of Georgia. For the state senate maps, for example, the court says that there is a ten district area where the current maps violate the Voting Rights Act. That's Senate District Ten, Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-five, Twenty-eight, Thirty, Thirty-four, Thirty-five, Forty-three, and Forty-four, and those can be found on page five hundred and fourteen of the order. And that's the piece of the order that the current Senate proposal ignores. The vast majority of Black voters who are newly placed in Black Majority districts are from outside the ten district area that the court identified in its order. Furthermore, there are specific districts within the ten district area that the court found unlawful, like Senate District Sixteen, that remain virtually unchanged and leave our some of our clients still in a district where they cannot elect candidates of choice. Now, I mentioned that that our letter also includes a proposed remedial state senate and a state house plan, and we urge this committee to take a look at those plans because those plans adequately address both pieces of the order that we're really concerned with. They make sure that the vote dilution area that the court identified is adequately remedied, and it makes sure to make as few changes as possible to other areas of the map that the court's order does not address. Those maps can be found at aclugadotorg, and those include the technical files associated with it, the block equivalency files. We urge this committee to take a look at this so that we're not back in court after this process and so that Georgians have fair maps. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Niles Francis. I am a resident of Mableton, which is now in Senate District Twenty-eight. I'm here to speak about the Senate map that was unveiled on Monday. Judge Jones instructed this committee to draft to redraw ten Senate districts. Senator Edwards, you said that the map redraws fifteen. Those fifteen districts were not were not redrawn in this new map here, and two of those districts that were ordered to be redrawn, Senate District Sixteen and Thirty-four, were not even touched as part of this new map. I would implore this committee to redraw these maps in a way that complies with Judge Jones's order because I know not a single member of this committee wants these maps back in court. So I would implore you all to redraw these maps in a way that complies with the judge's order. And I'd like to talk a little bit about Senate District Twenty-eight, which I am now a resident of as of this new map. Senator Edwards, you said that the two districts that were redrawn to be majority-black were drawn in the vicinity of the were drawn in the vicinity of the plaintiffs remedial maps. Senate District Twenty-eight was not. Senate District Twenty-eight on the remedial map that was drafted by the plaintiffs includes parts of Fulton and Fayette Counties, and I believe parts of Clayton County as well and and Coweta County. The redrawn Senate District Twenty-eight that we're looking at today includes parts of Cobb, Douglas, and Fulton Counties. So I would just implore you all to reconsider these maps and redraw them in a way that complies with Judge Jones's order. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think the you want to what? I don't have the next sign up sheet. Lillian's collecting it, so do you think? I'm waiting on the sign up sheet. All right, next up, we have Ken Lawler.
Hello again, members of the committee. I think I know most of you. I'm Ken Lawler. I co-chair Fair Districts of Georgia. We are a nonpartisan, all volunteer organization. I think we're kind of like the redistricting nerds in the room among many poor folks. Happy to be back here testifying today. With me today, we have several of our volunteer crew who came down to attend both the House and the Senate hearings, so thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. Our principles for looking at the maps really focus on what's the objective of this session? The session, in our view, should be about two things. Number one is drawing the new Black Majority districts as required by the court. That's number one. The second thing we're looking for is we don't want to see districts changed aside from those necessary to comply with the court order for partisan purposes. In other words, we don't want to see any partisan take backs, given that you had to draw new districts to allow Black voters to have representation. So we're scoring the maps based on those two criteria. Do the maps comply with the court order? And secondly, are there other changes being made that appear to be for partisan purposes? Now, we have developed scorecards on these maps. Those scorecards are being delivered to your offices this afternoon. I don't believe we have delivered those to the committee in the hearing, but also on our website, but you will have two scorecards in your office this afternoon, one for the map being considered today and one for the map that is being offered potentially tomorrow by the Democratic Caucus. You'll have both of those scorecards available. So let me just brief you on how we're looking at this. We're looking at we're scoring the maps on a two-part pass-fail test. Number one, does it add the Black Majority districts? And number two, does it have any other partisan changes? So with respect to the Black Majority districts, we do a simple analysis, which says count the number of districts and are there additional Black Majority districts? As Mr. Garabidou mentioned, that the map does pass that test. As Mr. Garabidou mentioned, there are other considerations in the judge's order that are more technical in nature. Our group does not look at those, but you know, the printers, for example, in the case will be assessing those for your benefit. The one comment I'll make about a Black opportunity or Black influence district is that your map has an issue with Senate District Thirty-three. Senate District Thirty-three decreased Black population from forty-three percent to thirty-five percent. The reason that's important is that research that we have available shows that thirty-seven percent is like a magic number. When you have a community of voters of color that exceed thirty-seven percent in a given district, that that allows those voters to influence the vote. They're not the majority, but they allow that gives them the power to strongly influence the vote in that district. So in this case, the map has an issue or concern, in our view, in that Senate District Thirty-three has decreased in its Black population from forty-three percent to thirty-five percent. So that's a potential weakness. However, given that the map does implement the two Black Majority districts requested, we give the map a pass on that part of the test. It's okay. When we look at the partisan side, however, we see issues, okay? Clearly, the two new districts that were added, Senate District Seventeen and Thirty-three, are net new Democratic districts, as one might expect, constructing them from primarily Black voters. However, we note that Senate District Six and Forty-two were basically uprooted and pushed elsewhere. You say it's a result of the Whipple effect. We believe that Whipple effect is 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 in excess, and as a result, you have flipped back two districts back to Republican column after making those changes. We think that's inappropriate. Again, this exercise should not be about maintaining any partisan balance one way or the other. The exercise should be implement the Black Majority districts as requested and leave the rest of the map alone. And so our objection to the map and the reason we say that the map fails the partisan test is that you have basically repurposed Six and Forty-two into into Republican districts, and we view that as a partisan take back to try to even the square, which we think is completely inappropriate at this point in time. So we say that the map fails the test on a partisan basis, but it passes the test from a Black Majority perspective. Again, our our analysis on the Black Majority is very simple-minded analysis. It does not take into account the nuances that Mr. Garabidou just mentioned around how the districts were constructed. The other thing we'll mention is that this map changes a lot of population. It moves around fourteen percent of the population around. We believe that's excessive, and in fact, of that fourteen percent of the population, about a quarter of it is being moved strictly due to the uprooting of Districts Six and Forty-two. So again, that to us indicates excessive change and for partisan purposes, which we believe should not happen. We know it's legal to do it. We just think it's wrong, and that's what that's what our advocacy says here. We will be prepared tomorrow to discuss the if the Democratic map is offered, we will also be prepared to discuss our issues with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I'm happy to take a question.
Okay, I think it's Carolyn Hargrove. I apologize if I'm you don't you don't want to. And then after Julie Bowlin is Jordan Madden. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and Committee Members. I'm Julie Bowlin, the Redistricting Chair for the League of Women Voters of Georgia. The League has been at the forefront of the fight for democracy for over a hundred years. We continue to ask that changes to the maps be limited to those required to address the remedy ordered by the court. The committee should reject any and all attempts by members of either party to incorporate other changes for partisan political purposes. The maps offered by the Senate have failed both of these basic parameters as outlined by the Fair District, Georgia's report. Secondly, we request that the committee chairs in both the House and Senate ensure that there's language access by translating public-facing materials, such as the Comment Portal, into a minimum minimum set of languages required to reach diverse Georgian citizens. Georgians deserve a redistricting process that inspires trust and confidence from all Georgians. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jordan Madden. And after Jordan will be Brian Ramirez.
Good afternoon. I am Jordan Madden, a student member with the Georgia Justice Coalition. Thank you guys for being here. As a Black voter in this state, I recognize the importance of voting. However, I'm really relying on our elected officials to create district maps that count my community fairly. Young Georgians deserve district maps that accurately represent our communities and redistricting processes that inspire trust and confidence as we begin to engage in the democratic process. So we're here to tell our elected officials, all of you guys in this room, that representation does matter, and democracy means we, as the voters, get to choose our legislators, not the other way around. More fair and accurate maps help us to reinvigorate more young Black and Brown voters to get engaged and motivate them as they let their voices be heard. To you all here in this room, it is your job to prioritize fair and accurate maps so that we can get this job done. The future generation of Black and Brown voters in Georgia are counting on it. We know that this fight is not over, unfortunately, but this is the beginning to a long battle to ensure maps are equitable, and we'll be right here fighting for those maps along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Brian here? After Brian is Xena Muhammad. And if you want to come on up and wait against the wall, that way we can quickly get through. It'll take less time between. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Committee. My name is Brian. I'm a student at Georgia State University and a member of the Georgia Youth Justice Coalition. Georgia State University consistently ranks first in degrees awarded to African-Americans, and over the last few years, politicians have sent a message that Black, Brown, and young people aren't worth the exact representation promised to all. Young Georgians deserve district maps that accurately accurately represent our communities in a redistricting process that inspires trust and confidence as we engage in the democratic process. Right now, I'm a Fairburn resident, District Thirty-eight, on the proposed Senate maps, and might soon become an area that disproportionately represents very different communities, all the way from Palmetto to Buckhead, both of which completely different communities. This just doesn't make any sense. We need fair districts that can make sure that every person feels represented by their elected officials and that their priorities priorities will get heard instead of district of district representatives that intently only focus on one demographic or the other. Fair maps can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck is Anna Dennis. If you want to come up again to the wall, that's perfect. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Xena. I'm a student at the University of Georgia, and I'm also a member of the Georgia Youth Justice Coalition. I just wanted to give a quick personal statement. I voted for the first time in twenty-twenty, and I remember feeling so empowered to do something that Black activists have fought for through generations. However, today I feel very discouraged about the actual power of my vote. Over the last few years, I've seen unfair maps dilute the strength of Black youth voters like myself, even after a federal judge ruled that Georgia's districts were gerrymandered so aggressively that he would not allow another election without redistricting. I'm still seeing that we're continuing to make this process as difficult and inaccessible as possible. I think that this is a chance for Congress to redeem themselves, but unfortunately, we have yet to see that. New student or young person living in Georgia should feel discouraged from voting, and if that's the case, then our democracy is jeopardized. To confront the challenges Georgians face, we must have a government where all voices are heard equally, where the public interest, not special interest, guides decision-making, and where we can put faith in our leaders. But I do have a strong sense of Georgia pride, and I am confident that our representatives will do the right thing for states. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anna, and then on deck is Vivian Moore. And I apologize if I missed her.
No worries. Good afternoon, y'all. Good afternoon, Chair and Committee. I'm Anna Dennis. I'm the Executive Director of Common Cause Georgia. We are a pro-democracy organization that has been challenging redistricting across the country and particularly in this state for many decades. But there are some things that we are definitely concerned about. We are part of C four coalitions and also C three coalitions of the Georgia Redistricting Alliance. We are concerned about the creation of the two additional majority Black districts of Senate District Seventeen and Senate District Twenty-eight. It does not comply with the judge's order. We would like for this committee to actually follow the judge's order and comply with the maps that need to be drawn. With these maps, it reduces the number of Black influence districts from two to one, and Senate District Forty-two was forty was sorry, fifty-one percent white, and now it's fifty-nine percent white, and was moved to the. it's fifty-nine percent white, and was moved to the outskirts of the metro Atlanta area to basically rule Georgia. CD Six had this similar fate. This proposal does not do what it needs to do, and it does not create more representation for black voters. I am a person who is a native of Georgia. I am a native of the South Metro area, born and raised. Happy to say I am from Clayton County, so this is definitely a concern for me and definitely a concern of my family, my community members, and all the folks who are definitely in this room who are speaking up to say that they want fair redistricting practices and they would like their voices to be heard. And so we would like for you all to do that by honoring what the judge has said to do in the order by following the rules and not creating different processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Vivian Moore, and on deck is Mindy Seeger.
Thank you, ma'am. Vivian Moore, I'm with the Georgia NAACP, and, um, I'm here today just to let you know our concerns and our recommendations. Well, one of the things that we're concerned about is not having enough time for public access so that we can have our voices heard. Um, another thing is that we want to make sure that the maps are drawn fairly. Many of the maps have just divided us as black folks. We are divided now, and, um, what will happen is we have less people going to the polls to vote. Precincts have been moved. Um, things that we think that will hurt the black community is what we want to make sure that we have a voice, that we can actually let you all know that we need to be a part of that when you start drawing, rejoining the districts. So a part of what we wanted to do is to make sure that we have fair, very fair maps. Number one, when you talk about fairness, it's a fact that over the years has been discriminated. So when we talk about fairness, we need to talk about all fairness. So we talk about all people and the people that really, really need to get to these polls and precincts. When you redraw the maps, consider all of that. Don't just consider that we just rejoin a map to make sure that it's what we think the court wants. Let's have a voice by hearing the people and knowing what we need. I've been around in Georgia now almost forty years, and I can tell you from my time that I've been here, there used to be something they called redlining. I call it no lining because we didn't get what we needed when you start drawing the line. You not only took away businesses, you took away precincts. Now we had drop boxes. Drop boxes went from thirty to five. Things of those things are, are real concern, and we want to make sure that we have the timeline to give you our input. So again, I'm Vivian Moore, I'm with the Georgia NAACP, and we represent a hundred and, um, about thirty of us, uh, in terms of county. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mindy Seeger, and on deck is Hannah Joy.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Committee. My name is Mindy Seeger. I'm a resident of Cobb County. I also am the advocacy director for, for Which It Stamps, which is a nonpartisan organization that employs people to have local control and lift local voices. We are here because this body passed maps that were graded an F in the case of the Senate maps and found to be in violation by the Court of Section Two of the VRA. I attended a couple of days of testimony as I was able, and the overwhelming impression I got in court was that the maps overall do not represent the population growth changes in Georgia, of which all growth is due to any part black populations, and many decreases were attributed to non-Hispanic white populations. That was overwhelming every day in court. We people understand and ask for fair maps that reflect the tapestry of Georgia, competitive where possible, and are compliant with the Court and the VRA. Let's talk a little bit about what that means. Reflection means that this body, as a whole, should represent and reflect the demeanor of its constituency. The only way that's possible is if voters have an opportunity to vote for their elected candidates of choice. It has to be a reflection of the constituency. Competitive, we talk about this a lot. It breeds excellence. It allows voters to feel like they have a real chance of electing their candidates of choice. Otherwise, why would they show up at all? It helps confront partisan extremes that plague our political process on both ends of the political spectrum. The Court VRA compliance. We have to get this done because we don't want to be back in court. You don't want to be back in court. Voters want to know where their districts are, who they will be voting for, so they can start evaluating candidates. Candidates can know where they're qualifying, and we can get on with the business of the election that is coming upon us in 2024. But I want to talk about something we haven't talked about yet. It is absolute fiscal irresponsibility to enact the maps that you enacted that you were warned were flawed, cost us tens of thousands of dollars a day in legal defense, continued legal defense, and the session we're engaged in right now. We want you to do right by the voters and get it right this time so we can stay out of court and we can have maps that we can rely on. Many of the groups and advocates in this very room and across this state will take up the mantle and responsibility of educating voters of these changes because that's what we do. This state has a robust surplus, and I request this body consider funding these impacted counties' Board of Elections to launch appropriate PSA campaigns to notify these voters of district changes so they know where they are voting and who they are voting for. That would be a good case of taxpayer funds many in Georgia will support, but this continued waste of dollars to keep us in court and to continue to have us in a special session and keep rehashing the same things over and over again is a waste of time and a waste of money that could easily be avoided. So I am asking you, on behalf of voters across Georgia, to get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are you Hannah?
Yes.
After Hannah, I have Ann Duncan.
Good afternoon, Chair and all Committee Members. My name is Hannah Gebber-Salassi, and I'm the executive director of Protect the Vote GA, which is a nonpartisan organization that works to mobilize voters and protect voting rights here in Georgia. We focus on the metro Atlanta area, and I was also raised in Atlanta and the metro area, growing up in Bilticab and Gwinnett Counties. And over the years, I've seen how much more diverse these communities have become, and right now, we have an opportunity to meet these communities where they are because they're no longer what they were thirty years ago. I'm here today standing in solidarity with Black Voters Matter and many other of our colleagues from across the state to further raise concerns that have been shared regarding the maps. It has been made clear by a federal judge who ruled that the current maps legally dilute the power of black voters such as myself, and that is unacceptable. I, along with many others today, am concerned about the proposed maps and that they will not increase representation of black voters here in Georgia as requested by the federal judge. We urge you to draw the maps that represent equity and fair representation of the diverse voices in our Georgia community. By doing so, we can ensure that maintaining public trust and accountability is a priority. I encourage you all to lean on the expertise of experts who have spoken here today, such as Georgia Redistricting Alliance, Fair Districts Georgia, ACLU of Georgia, Galeo, Common Cause, Georgia Youth Justice Coalition, League of Women Voters, and so many others that are here represented. We also echo the concerns of removing barriers to language access on the website. As someone who grew up in a first-generation household with parents whose first language was not English, it's really important to make sure we are incorporating multilingual features on the website to support people who do want to submit testimony or public comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ann Duncan and Isabel. Philip is on deck, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the Committee. My name is Ann Duncan. I am just an ordinary voter from North Fulton County that believes in democracy, and redistricting is the foundation of democracy so that all of our voices can be heard equally. And I am here today because I am really concerned about equity for black and brown folks in our community. And I just want to know that I can count on you on this committee to make sure that the maps that you recommend are in compliance with what the judge has ordered you to do. We need to focus the changes on the areas that the judge identified where black voices need more representation. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Is Isabel? Oh, uh, a- after her will have Senator James.
Hi, everyone. My name's Isabel Philip. I'm a UGA student and a resident of Athens, Georgia. Our city is full of young folks for whom the upcoming election will be some of the firsts they've taken part in. Our city is also cracked to the point that many of us question whether their votes have any power at all. As A.J. noted, in 2021, Athens is sliced into political pieces, and as women based on the current maps, which specifically sought to diminish the power of black voters, that isn't unique to Athens. The legacy of racial germination around Georgia is something that we need to confront together. I hope to see the proposed maps redrawn fairly now, and I hope to see cities like Athens drawn fairly in the future because Georgians, especially young black Georgians most affected, deserve district maps that accurately, accurately represent our communities and our redistricting process that inspires trust and confidence as we first begin to engage in the democratic process. I love UGA. I love Athens, and I love Georgia, and I want to be here for a long time. So I really hope to see my elected officials fight for myself, my classmates, and a fair and just future for our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Senator James, I think Stephanie Ali. You'll be up after, and you'll be the last. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Senators, Donzella James. Former, uh, right now in the Thirty-Fifth District, but soon to be, if this passes, in the Twenty-Eighth, uh, District, new district. Well, Judge Jones ordered that the Senate redraw the maps to remedy discrimination against black voters in ten specific districts. And the court specifically found that black voters in these, those, uh, ten districts did not have an equal opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. Instead of focusing on those ten districts, the Republican, uh, proposal makes the vast majority of its changes in districts not identified by the court order as not having enough, um, minorities. So instead of focusing on those districts, the vast majority of its changes are in districts that's not identified by the court order. And in the districts identified by the court, the Republican proposal changes district numbers instead, including mine. For no apparent reason, it appears to be a smoke and mirrors and partisan gaiety. And I ask that this map be rejected and a map be adopted that complies with the Voting Rights Act. This act does not do that. And maybe you can add a few specifics. I want to add some specifics about my district. First of all, I got elected in ninety-three to fill the unexpired term of Arthur Langford, and I still live in that same house that we had just built that year, my late husband and I. And I wanted to do things to help my community. So I was, ended up being the second African-American female in history to come into the state senate in the Thirty-Fifth District. And I was proud and honored to serve all those years. And in two thousand and two, I left the senate to allow other people to, to run, but in two thousand and nine, my community asked me to run again because they needed, they never stopped calling on me. They needed a person that would listen to them and could strengthen the community of interest, and that's what I have attempted to do all these years. So in two thousand and nine, I, I ran again when the seat was vacated again, this time by Cassine Reed in the middle of the term. I won overwhelmingly, and I've continued to do that because I trust the people and the people trust me, and I work with them. I go throughout my community. I go to all the events, and we, we work together, just like many of the other senators who are being affected right now. This morning, one of my colleagues got up for personal point of privilege, uh, and that's the senator from the Forty-fourth, who is also going to be changed out of her district to the Seventeenth, which is supposed to be the other new, uh, district, uh, that, uh, people are saying is supposed to, uh, satisfy the judge's orders. I disagree that it, that it does that because I had a seventy-nine percent black district, yes, and I knew it was going to change because it, it was too packed. So I didn't mind that, but to be taken completely out of the district and, and just my house, even some of the people who live on my street or the next street over are not in the, uh, the new Twenty-Eighth. So I don't even recognize the old Thirty-Fifth District from this map, and I cannot even understand why, uh, Senator, uh, I know we're supposed to call them numbers, but I'm, the Thirty-eighth, uh, how, how she could have Cobb County and the part that I get, I have now, if I, if this twen-, uh, new map passes, how hard a senator could come all the way around and get my district, and then I go all the way around the other way and get her district. It's musical chairs. What is it? I don't understand. So please, please, take a look at rejecting this map or looking at the, the mere fact that it does not satisfy, uh, the court orders.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, and I, I had a picture of the Voting Rights Act being signed, and I wanted to bring it up here, but it's much too big to, and I was going to show you why I ran for office in the first place. I wouldn't have even been able to be the second African-American in history to be in the senate had it not been for that Voting Rights Act, and that's what we're trying to comply with now. So I thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope that you will look at this map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Stephanie Ali.
If I had known, I would have definitely wanted to go before the good senator because that's a hard exit to follow. But, um, my name's Stephanie Ali. I am the policy director at New Georgia Project Action Fund, and while everyone's sharing their Atlanta bona fides, I'll say that, don't hold it against me, but I'm originally from Alabama, which means, which means my people have been through this just recently. My folks are from the new congressional district in South Alabama that took multiple cycles to make happen. My folks are in the new majority-black district in South Alabama, and that is because Alabama's, uh, Alabama's ju-, oh, sorry, legislative system refused to follow judge's orders. And I told my mama over Thanksgiving, I was like, luckily, we got better leadership in Georgia, and now I'm sitting here thinking I'm gonna have to call my mama back because this is not better than Alabama. It's more subtle. I'll say that, it's more subtle. But changing number twenty-eight up here to Senator Ja-, where Senator James currently sits, over to Matt Brass, does not make a new black majority district, it just changes the number of one that already was. Taking District Seventeen from one place to another does not create a new black district, it just changes the number of one that was. Nothing is new here for black voters, they're just in new numbers they've got to learn. And a lot of new people are gonna have to learn a new rep, a new senator, a new number, a new polling place. So it's a lot of extra work for folks like us who do voter education, for folks like Ms. Vivian who do voter education, but it ain't gonna help build black power, which is what the judge ordered. But frankly, I know that the, just because I, like I said, my folks just been through this, the idea isn't complying with the judge's order. The idea is running down the clock because we are coming up on the twenty-twenty-four ele- The idea is running down the clock because we are coming up on the 2024 elections, and voter confusion only helps to break turnout. And we don't deserve that. We deserve a better class of leadership because I believe in Georgia. Like I said, I held it up to my family and said, now we going to do better. I can't wait for these maps. We going to do better. This is not a new black district. It's just under a new name. This is not a majority black district that was created. This is a rebrand. This is a flipping of numbers. We should be doing just as the folks who have come here saying, we should be looking at Spalding, at Fayette, at the rest of McDonough, where these places really are, where black communities live and are underrepresented as they are. So I thank you again for your time, and I thank you again for your service. I know we all want to get out of here, but there's no reason to do this right now and come back to the court and come back and draw it again because I really do think we're better. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the public comment portion of our hearing today. We will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine AM in this same room. Tomorrow, we'll be hearing the minority leader's plan, and we'll be taking action. And so I invite you to come back then. Do I need a motion to adjourn? So moved, second? Second, all right. All in favor of adjourning? Thank you all for coming.